Just a brief discussion on board and administrator duties. A lot of this is probably going to be remedial to you all. You're all aware of how these duties are assigned. But I think it's just good that it's at the top of mind, especially as we're considering, or undertaking the search for a new county administrator. As you know, 15.2, that's 1401, provides that the powers of the locality are vested in their governing bodies. And unless otherwise clearly indicated, all powers granted to localities are vested in their governing bodies. And if it's any action, essentially, if it's any action that a locality can take under all of Title 15.2, it must be taken through a majority vote of the governing body. The only exceptions to that are powers that the locality might exercise through the planning process, through like the planning commission, some other specific statutory carve-out. As you know, there is immunity for members of boards of supervisors, governing bodies of localities. The immunity is arising from, or any actions that arise from the exercise or failure exercise, the discretionary or governmental authority as members of the governing body. Obviously, it does not apply to conduct constituting intentional or willful misconduct or gross negligence. It does not necessarily confer immunity for violations of federal law, employment decisions or discrimination, Americans with Disabilities Act, 1983, actions that's violations of the Constitution essentially, or LUPA, which is the Religious Land Use in Incarcerated Persons Act, which could potentially individualize that. So I say that because the best practice is to avoid individual concerns by adopting good general policies and then delegating the administrative decisions to your county administrator. The county administrator, as provided in Virginia Code, is the chief administrative officer. It's not mandatory in the traditional form of government, which Floyd County observes and in most other counties with a traditional form of government. However, even though it's not necessary, almost every locality has at least a part-time county administrator. I have one off the top of my head that's part-time, and pretty much everyone else that I'm aware of is full-time. Although it's not mandatory, if a county administrator is in fact appointed, then 15.2-1541 applies that sets out those duties. It specifically provides that the chief administrative officer of a locality, in our situation, we're talking about county administrator, shall be the administrative head of government, responsible to the governing body for the proper management of all the affairs of the locality. Basically, the board sets the policy, the county administrator implements the policy. And specifically, the duties are, unless otherwise provided by law, the county administrator shall see that all ordinances, resolutions, and directives of the board are in force and are faithfully executed, that the administrator shall make reports to the governing body from time to time as required, to keep you as board members up to date on the affairs of the locality, to act as the person that the administrative heads report to and gives directions in turn to those administrative heads of the various county departments under the administration's control and supervision, submit the annual budget, execute the budget, and keep the governing body fully advised on the locality's financial condition and its future financial needs. The county administrator shall appoint all officers and employees in the locality, with that exception that unless you otherwise specifically provide by ordinance or resolution, appoint all the officers and employees. And that also includes handling discipline grievances of what have you. The HR function is essentially under the county administrator and has been delegated further by the county administrator. And perform such other duties as may be prescribed by the governing body. And I'm aware of county administrators who have served as the director of the PSA in addition to those duties as administrator. That's with the agreement of the PSA. Same for the EDA, if the EDA so agrees, sometimes the county administrator can be appointed to serve in that capacity as well. If there was a regional industrial facilities authority, that is another area where the county administrator may serve as a board member, or the local jail board. Additionally, the county administrator generally is appointed as clerk of the board. And the clerk's duties are to record the proceedings of the governing body, to basically manage the ordinances, to, let's see, make regular entries of its ordinances, resolutions, and decisions on all questions concerning the raising of money, and within five days after an order or a levy is made to deliver a copy of a commission of revenue, manage the ability to administrate and review people's functions, record the vote of the supervisor at public meetings, preserve and file all accounts acted upon by the governing body in accordance with Virginia Public Records Act, and basically has general administrative oversight over all county functions. Few comments and observations that bring your attention. As you know, the administrator serves the entire board. The board only acts officially through a majority vote in duly held public meetings. Best practice, communications in general should be with the entire board when practicable or unless the question or issue only involves a specific member of the board. Similar considerations apply when you're talking about the county attorney. In general, general policy questions, what's going on in the county? I've got a legal question for, can person X out in the community do this? That's generally something that would be shared with all the members of the board, except when there's a specific legal question in the case of the county attorney or just a specific board member question and one-on-one communication with the county administrator. But in general, it's advisable to have all the board members copied on emails or included in communications, so that everyone's on the same page and is dealing with the same information.
I think what I've tried to do is not address you individually unless it was just something like a road in your district, but you know.
Citizen, hey, what's your problem?
Yeah, right.
Right, and I think that's the perfect example. If we've got a general policy question on what's the board, what action is the board going to take? What's the board going to do, then that needs to be shared. When the question comes from a board member, it's always best to have it shared with the entire board and the responses as well. But if it's just something sort of district-specific, or there's a roadway or something, or a constituent question, then of course, that's one-on-one.
And I think we've found out this year, sometimes there's things that the administrator can't tell you. We're under a state police investigation, or that there was, you know, things I wasn't being told either. Been pretty tricky.
And there may be times when something needs to be shared with the chair specifically.
And we'd say sometimes, like just last year, it was just supposed to be county administrator and me, you know. Some got upset because, you know, I wanted to tell them everybody.
You know, and there was, you know, department heads that were irritated with me because I wasn't, you know, saying them on things, but I couldn't, you know.
And then I think in 2019, there was a need to declare an emergency for the, the weather was so dry last fall, and fire hazard, and so we had to respond quickly with the chair at that point. But then it was eventually able to help the chair. Right. But it doesn't matter, general policy, whenever we can try to communicate contemporaneously with all board members. So just to clarify, I think you've taken action today to address this issue, but I wanted to address when, in the traditional form of government, when no county administrator is appointed, the board serves as, essentially as the administrative body and then has legal authority to act as administrator in any gap. You're going to, I think you handled that by designating Cindy as the acting county administrator.
Can I take it back?
I was going to say, it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I should have given you more of a choice. But then that is the, sort of the next issue. In addition to being the providing officer, the chairman shall be the head of local government for all official functions, and in the event that there is no chief administrative officer designated, it shall be the duty of the chairman to see that the functions of the county administrator are carried out if the governing body has not acted otherwise. I mean, just warning you, acted otherwise, so it's determined off the hook, right?
The one thing, though, that I would ask, one question I have. So currently, we have a county administrator and an assistant county administrator. So if something happened to the county administrator, or they were unable to perform the duties for a period of time, then it would automatically fall to the captain, assistant? Or would it automatically fall to the chair?
It's as you, so unless you so provide, it falls to the chair.
Correct. If there's no acting.
I wasn't aware of that.
Right. So if there is no acting assistant county administrator, because the assistant county administrator is now the acting county administrator.
I mean, I'm just thinking from the standpoint of COVID crisis.
Yeah.
If county administrator contracted COVID, was unable to perform their duties, would the chair be here to perform those duties?
So yes, in my view, let's say January 2nd, Ms. Ryan decides that she needs to run off to Las Vegas. Then, yeah, everyone talks about COVID, so. Then, yes, those duties would fall to the chair.
And even in the past year, if it was something that happened, I thought it just automatically would. So without action from the board, the chair would be the chief administrator.
Right, and I don't think it really came up at all, but if it were to have come up, I think then any action you take to ratify the actions of the deputy county administrator would result with that. But the default is, the default is that the chair would assume those duties.
Is there one about the reply before this, that talks about either designate another individual to carry out administrative duties during any gap or periods of duties, automatically fall to the board chair? So is that an and/or automatically falls, or designation applies as well to the chair?
I'm sorry, I'm going to the language.
It's on page 48, page 6, slide 48, page 16, bottom slide, the one right before you were just talking about. See, the bottom bullet, either designate another individual to carry out administrative duties, or.
It's an and/or falls. Yeah.
If the board is taking action to do that, that person.
Yeah.
Would you, I guess, maybe what you're getting at is, could we designate, like we hire a new administrator, could we designate at that time that it automatically falls to the assistant? Would this be something that would happen if that person was unable to perform the duties? Then we'd have to meet the board.
I think it's, I think it's within your good judgment, whether it's appropriate sort of as a succession of office matter to adopt a resolution that says, this person is the county administrator and in their absence or inability to act, our default, the default position in Floyd County will be the assistant one.
Right, I mean, that might be a good.
Might be a good resolution to have.
Yeah, to have. Yeah, to have practice.
It's still practice, but.
But that way, we've got an official.
Absolutely.
And I could see, well, something happens, something controversial happens, and so we're just, you know.
Trying to keep any mistake from coming up that who's actually enjoying.
Although the chair may want to.
And no additional problems. Throw that out there.
And that was really all, I just wanted to refresh on that a little bit and see if that sparked any discussion.
Can I go back to one thing about immunity? There's so many COVID questions and discussion. I'm assuming that any HIPAA violations, information that we may receive that's. Any HIPAA violations, we would not have an immunity requirement.
Nope. Well, you have to be covered by HIPAA, though, and it's a fairly narrow scope. So healthcare providers, insurers, they're covered by HIPAA, and then their business associates are covered entities. So if a hospital hires legal counsel and gives documents to the legal counsel, legal counsel would be subject to HIPAA. But if I just decided to give you all my protected health information, you're not covered entities by HIPAA in this relationship, so there is no HIPAA violation. You're not covered.
As a contractual employee, as a contractual employee, it doesn't apply, right?
Right, but.
But for a standard, you know, any employee in this, if, let's say I become aware of a employee's health situation, and I start talking about it, that would be a HIPAA violation, even though technically that employee works for the county administrator, is still the pecking order of this board, and that's how it was explained to me at one time.
My advice would be to not disclose any information of employees, notwithstanding that you might technically not be.
But I'm going back to his question on the HIPAA.
In the context of your question, it's doubtful to me. It's always a good idea to, to keep anyone's medical information safeguarded, right? But I doubt that you're actually covered by HIPAA in that. Anyone's medical information safeguarded, right? But I doubt that you're actually covered by HIPAA in that. Yeah, I'll always tell you, do the right thing, you know. But in that example, I doubt you're covered by HIPAA.
Let me ask you this, because it might come up. I mean, we're talking about going into the most serious part of the pandemic. Let's say I call the chair and say, so many employees at admin have contracted it, we need to close the office, and he wanted to tell the rest of the board and said, so-and-so, so-and-so, so-and-so have got it, it's got a HIPAA violation for saying, and he fell with the, you know, parlor habit.
That's a much better way of asking the question than it, like, I'm trying to figure out how to navigate that. Ethically, whatever.
Should I not tell him who the employees are, and I should just say, we've got three with, who, the employees that are closed? Or should I tell Joe, this is who they are, but you shouldn't tell, or?
I would start by saying, we've got three employees, we need to close the office or take other action without designating anyone's identity. And then the next thing to do is, do your own.
That's right, beyond that.
Yeah, because then we get into, did they have contact with those?
If you're in the office and had contact with them, you've blown up. Whoever's given this day, and I would suggest that I think you may have been in contact with them in the past, ever period. And that's the most exact, there's nothing that I can gain, my knowledge.
But then closing the office.
And even going so far as to, first, I think even ethically, for me, if a citizen calls me and says, why is the office closed? That's another step to say, what do I tell them at that point? Because I don't know, if there's only kind of people that work in a particular office. Or let's say, in our case, recreation, recreation's closed because of the COVID case. Well, we've only got one hundred employees, so that's, you know.
You're going to, damn right.
How do we ethically balance that, then? I don't know. That would be interesting to try to navigate through what we tell the public as well.
I would say give.
Are you sorry to ask the question?
Give the actual reason is because it's due to safety during the pandemic, and not give details that person X was exposed, person Y, or anything like that. I think that just saying that we're, you know, COVID precautions requires us to take this action.
This is tricky, I mean, you really don't want, especially with government, you don't want to spread any along with that.
And the reason I'm kind of being, you know, careful with these answers is because even though you're, you know, in a lot of these scenarios, you're not, there's not going to be a HIPAA violation, kind of like with the Conflict of Interest Act, there's a slide saying, you know, a lot of things that are not technically violations of the Conflict of Interest Act but the public still perceives as a conflict. And very similar to this situation, even though things that you might discuss regarding health information or COVID outbreaks may not technically be HIPAA violations, there's going to be a significant portion of the public that might still perceive that to be a violation. So that's why I'm kind of being cautious there.
And may be unethical, may not be illegal, but it may be unethical.
Yeah, it might not be the best thing to do. I'd say be cautious with that.
If something was to arise like that, you know, in the next six months or whatever, but maybe we should, if, for example, we're notified that there's an action taken, that maybe along with that, some type of help from Steve or from staff, or what we should say, you know, so that we don't put our mouth on the way. And what are actions we should, because if something happens, there'll be questions. I can only imagine what, can't imagine what schools are going to do. I mean, they're having a really difficult scenario, people around this.
And the school has other proxy concerns that not related to HIPAA?
Yeah.
Any help that we can get on the foot, what we should be, our approach to a situation.
So like in a scenario that Cindy has raised, where the offices she has deemed should be closed, it would be good for you and Cindy to work on a statement that can be emailed to the five of us and other employees in the building as to, this is what, you know, this is our standard of statement.
Yeah, and that goes exactly to the point that I was trying to address with that slide. We all are operating with a unified voice, so there's not confusion there. We're all operating with the same information, you know, as quickly as possible, we're all getting the same information.
Right, right, so I mean, that would be, under that scenario that you brought up, that would, I would assume, be the way we would handle the concerns that supervises you over your head. Indeed.
I don't want to compromise anybody's privacy here. The board is our system, you have a perfect board control.
Sort of agency or whatever, this is how you do the development, you know.
And at this point, the surge may have a surge within a surge within a surge now they're saying, not just one surge, but two, so, yeah.
This board isn't the health department, so that's not our role.
No.
Our role is to, we have a technical partner.
Right. Whatever information the health department, if this house is up to the health department, not in our control or influence, thank goodness.
Very much. Thank you for the. Yeah, right.
Look forward to the rest of it later, too.
The rest of it usually puts people to sleep, so we might be able to get through that more quickly.
You think so? Just remember on this one, I wouldn't want to ask you multiple questions, just like he did. It's that chair that I'm running on.
We need to extend our fortuna here, if we need to make our announcement.
Yes, I've got that down. How did we, how has, as kind of last question, how has the insurance been dealing with our. I guess we have a payment for that. Didn't pay for everything, but.
We need to set a date for reorganization, maybe next month.
There's nothing else, I'll, good afternoon, and.
First, Paul's on the radio, the second, third, fourth, the first working day. I'll let you go for a few more seconds.
He's been saying first is good, you know, it's just another day or something.
Hollow.
Is anyone for work for you for reorganization?
That's a hollow.
I guess it's been a long time this party, and it's on that night.
We could maybe on the first at midnight.
Did it work for you?
What time was it?
Fourth. Get up my dinner, or could we do it after 12:00, like 1:00 o'clock?
What's due?
I can be there with the day.
Now, I want to be on the, well, I mean, I can always just get a sub, not to my show, but I have a commitment from 9:00 to noon.
I was talking to you.
Oh, okay.
I said, I'll point out to you.
Like 5:30?
I think so. Do you mind spending your first day? Put the pressure on you already, aren't you?
So 5:30 on one floor?
Yeah, on one floor.
And we said, was we going to try and do the rest of Steve's presentation at that time? Or just do this and do it later?
No, there is, there is, right?
On the same day. All right, fourth, I guess, if he can. Fourth, at what time is it?
5:30, if I'm sure we're going to. I was just thinking that I'd be.
Yeah, that's good.
How much?
5:30.
5:30 or the dark, so that's giving some of us a lot of time to work.
I'm getting ready to write your name, so.
I got it in there, 5:30.
I guess we'll get a packet, small packet before that, just agenda.
What I've got right now is all the appointments that need to be.
Right.
And you send that out, because there's no chair, so the county administrator sets the agenda on that one. I'll run out the first year I was chair, I'll be like, oh, I'm not chair anymore.
So, should we, speaking of what we just finished saying, not wishing any ill on them, but should we set as to what should happen? I mean, we would be in a no-chair situation and a no-county administrator situation.
It's not a work, it's not a working. That's the first working day. No, 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 I said that. Cindy was unavailable. But the way that, the way it worked, like if it were an emergency, the only thing that impacted emergency, but it would get from, it would get Kevin and there's the.
Right, so it would be Kevin, yeah.
Kevin, the administrator, who's really working on it.
Now, there was like two or three weeks of working period.
Yeah, I probably don't like leaving until the first day, you know, I mean, you, you've got two weeks there that you don't have a best, a director of emergency services. And you also don't have anybody here that, that's signing checks or, you know, if there's something that our emergency hadn't been done.
No, just that or an emergency.
Just the.
Because it's not a working day, there wasn't any role.
Right, first, second.
So we'll adjourn to the fourth. Do we adjourn? So we adjourn this meeting to the fourth at five thirty. But he also has to make his statement prior to that.
Yeah, we would be adjourned until an undisclosed location within the next fifteen days to review for county administrator. And then we will take a motion to adjourn till January fourth at five thirty.
We've got one more item of business, which is.
We still got two business. I asked, man, oh, yeah. Now, this was, um, a proclamation we had for, uh, Congress. Okay, motion to approve this proclamation for retirement for Congress.
All second.
Your last time. Yes.
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 Just want to know what, um, or do a time. We really are.
You get out of the picture.
We almost say you're leaving behind that. All of us have done divorced our opinion a hundred times, you know, and we, we'll be missing you, that's for sure. So you can get something else, be well.
Can we take a five minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, you have board member time to do that now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to tell Terry how much I appreciate her. I know when I first was elected, I replaced one of your best friends and, um, someone that you've served for a long time. And I really appreciate the way, you know, you're professional, you helped me, you're established in, um, our role here. And, um, you've been a friend and, and a great, great counselor to this board. And have done a help in so many areas, whether it be budget or personnel, or you've, you've served in so many roles so efficiently. I got to thinking about it today when I was driving in, you probably trained me at slaughters when I first started working there. You could probably train me twice, but, um, anyway, I just want to express how much I really do appreciate it. And I think that, that, I think I can speak to the county as a whole how much I appreciate, how much I appreciate you.
I'd also like to, uh, reiterate some of the things we said when we announced your retirement. Your, uh, your dedication to this county goes way beyond just a Monday through Friday job. And, um, the devotion that you've given to this county and the years of service and, um, sacrifice. Has not gone unnoticed and, um, I know the years ahead are going to hold so much amazing things for you. And, um, I just hope you'll embrace them with the dedication and the level of commitment that you've done here for the thirty-six years you've been in this office. You're welcome. You made that, I'm getting teary on. Oh, bring me some jokes.
As I really liked the person, um, you, you're speaking to me with a tough heart. Providing support, maybe you felt like I could ask, you know, I'd be, I guess, feel like better word for this, I was asking whether it be a little bit of your pilot. Um, the instruction that you, the guidance you gave me was more valuable than we should have about the training. And I don't know, just, just the memories that I have of being an employee for the county, you being assistant county administrator. I remember for some reason, this got on my mind, I would always have questions about instructions. Whether it be email, personal, with the distance to your own, and you always provide that. And, um, what Chris did, I'm gonna appreciate all your hard work there, you know, and personally, I appreciate what you've done. Help me do, uh, now, almost three years of my first term, so thanks, I'll be glad.
I didn't call my mama there.
You're not going to be able to carry so many really large members that long.
Yeah.
It is what it is. I, I've reflected my feelings to Terry and, uh, I'm not going to get all busy, but she's been here the entire time that I am and then some. And I've said it before, I've said it many times, that I would have got through, I don't think without her guidance and her insight. It's been appreciated and, and I think she has made a lasting impression on this county that is a positive.
Absolute.
And as I've said before, many generations ahead is going to feel that positive effect.
I'm gonna try to say a few words. My turn.
I already said mine, but I will say that I can remember Terry came to work when I was in the first department. Over years, you know, she's answered questions for me and, uh, me and Mary was talking on the way down last night. And she was in treasurer's office and as treasurer, you and her worked good together. And I was able to keep the county going and, you know, like I said earlier, you know, everybody's always saying fill your shoes, but we'd never be able to fill your shoes. We, we have thirty-something years of knowledge going out to go where, and, you know, it's going to be hard to catch up, it really be. The next person may not be filling shoes, but they've got a lot to earn that you, you're taking with you.
Really, I'd like stuff down. I really don't know where to start to express my gratitude for the honor of working for this county for this long. Even some days I've wanted to pull my hair out. All in all, it's been a good run. I counted up a while back, I've worked with twenty-three different supervisors, five county administrators. I'll have to say that I respected and appreciated each and everyone for the difficult jobs that they had or still have. And I've learned from each of them. I had someone ask me a few weeks ago what one of my most memorable experiences has been since I've been here. Uh, there have been so many, I would, I threatened to write a book one day. One that I do remember really well, uh, it was when our office was still at courthouse. There was a lady that came in one day and she was so angry, so irate, just screaming at the top of her lungs at us about snail from a chicken farm. And that we needed to do something about it. We tried to get a word in edgewise and we could not. And she finally got so mad that she dropped, she had a grocery bag about this tall, she dropped a whole bag of chicken parts in our floor. And our secretary at that time just about lost her mind, excuse my language, but, um, after we finally got a word in, we told her that that chicken farm was not in this county. And that there wasn't anything we could do about it, so she proceeded to leave our office with the chicken parts still on the floor, of course. That was a memory. As I've told you all many, many times, you have an amazing staff here now. I have full confidence in all of them, that they will continue their dedication.
That's one thing I would say about staff, every time I've ever come into this building, everyone that's been working. You know, they, you know, don't see an empty desk unless they're in a bathroom or something like that. They're always the third best worker, you know, quiet. You know, I can use them sometimes in a mat each other.
I, I just got one question, did, did Worcester or Hamilton have to clean it up?
Oh, no.
Of course.
But you know, I remember that chicken farm and I don't know how many times we'd get calls, my neighbor's spreading it all over his fields, you don't make him quit.
I, I, I remember getting one call from a person and they've been complaining, complaining about where it was being spread. And I said, well, I see a few that there's a problem, you get the health department from out there when they're spreading, and that's it. The next time they were spreading, they had to shut up, so they called the health department, the health department represented themselves out there. By the time they're half done spreading, here goes a chicken with its head half cut off running across the field. Oh, that was a time then too.
She wanted to get P to handle that.
They kept having a shredding operation for a while, so they couldn't figure what they were doing.
Generally back to business and I guess now I'm here.
Now, we got one more thing.
Yeah, we got one more. And they did us, uh, we do have to have a motion to pay Terry what was still over. Dedication years and, um, how much?
Or strictly the manual reading. Uh, according to Sandy, we know.
She said it's not necessary to do a motion if you agree to.
Yeah, consensus. So.
But she'll have to come back and she gets a little bit of the handery today.
Right.
She has to drive a trash truck.
Well, I was gonna say, is there any way we can get her in a trash truck before December thirty first?
I'm gonna do that for her. I think so.
That was yesterday, we already have a plan.
So that's the only thing I think is laid on, so.
Indeed, I could hear Pastor Steele at, well, four Q with line, and he always going to drive her church bus. So he took them out in his old car. One of them stood beside him and he went across the park. It was a trip, we had no enjoyment. Anyway, I'll take a motion to adjourn till January the fourth at five thirty PM. And in the meantime, we, we'll be meeting at an undisclosed location to interview for county administrator.